We will start with opening statements, two minutes per. And the selection order, we will go down District Four then District Five. And then we will rotate around as each question comes up and move it down the line as to who answers first. And then for the closing statements, we'll go in the opposite order. We'll start from the end on forward. Okay? All right. So, we get two minutes each. Please pay attention to the timekeeper. Sally will try and keep you in line. And so we can get to as many questions as possible. And we will start with the two-minute opening statements. And we start with Alfredo. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Alfredo Pedrosa. I have the honor of being your county supervisor for the Fourth District and also having served you on the Napa City Council. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion. I think the person that's going to be working the hardest tonight is Sally with the translating or the timekeeping. So, thank you very much. But I was listening to the translator in the back, and I do want to thank her for her service. She was doing a remarkable job of translating, and that's important. So, that way, we have folks being able to listen in whatever language they can listen to. So, for me, I'm running for another term because I care about this community. I have the honor of saying I'm born and raised in this community. I went to our local schools. I've seen how our community is changing, and I want to make sure that the change is working for us. And along the way, there's life experiences that happen that give you a different lens on life. Being a father to two kids, being a husband, gives you a different lens on how do you make the best public policy so your kids have the same opportunities you had and more. And also my mom, who's on her own, who's on fixed income, and making sure that she has a community where she can age in place and still feel proud to say she's in Napa with her family and being a grandma. All those things matter. And as your supervisor, we have an opportunity to make sure we have a unique quality of life that makes Napa County the place that we want to live in, where we want to retire, and where we want to raise families. So, I'm passionate about this community. I appreciate the honor to be considered to continue serving you in the Fourth District in Napa County.
Thank you. And now Amber.
Well, we prefer for everyone to stay seated. Sorry.
Well, I know people can't see me in the back, so I'm just going to let you know what I look like. Good evening. All right, because I was back there and I couldn't see.
Oh, okay.
Is this on? Oh, there we go. Okay. My name's Amber Manfree. I'm a candidate for supervisor in District Four in Napa County. I am a fifth-generation Nappen. My family's been here since around 1905. And I have a deep concern about the community. I've been watching it change for a long time. I've heard stories about, you know, how it's been for ages. And this is a beautiful place. I want to keep it that way. I was on my way down Soto Canyon Road tonight to come here, and the sunset was incredible. Did anybody else see the sunset?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, we are lucky. So, yeah. So, I'm running for this office because I don't feel represented as a citizen or as a scientist. I've been working in the community on a variety of projects and taking science to the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. And I've struggled to be heard, to have those pieces of information that I'm providing incorporated into policy. And I do think that's a problem for our community and our planning. So, I'm hoping to address that by having that seat myself. I'm concerned about climate change. I'm concerned about water quality and water security. And I'm concerned about our quality of life as it relates to traffic and housing and health and a lot of other issues. Those are all things that affect each one of us in different ways. And it's really important to not only listen to people, which I think we need to do more of, but also to consider what the science says in making decisions. Because then you have solutions that are smarter, that address problems more directly, and that save money and save time and get us to better, a better place sooner. So, yeah, I've just got a couple of seconds left, but I'm running to put locals first. That's really what I'm about. I have a very grassroots campaign, and we'll talk more about it with the questions.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here and for spending your time with us. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us. It's a great opportunity. My name is Maryam Obadamas. I'm currently on the American Canyon City Council. I'm also a practicing attorney. I practice full-time in Napa courts. I practice the realm of immigration law and in construction defect, so the civil litigation. I'm currently running for Napa County Board of Supervisors because I believe that we need a leader who's accessible and open to new ideas. My top three issues as a council member have been consistent, and it's what I've been working on, and they're traffic, housing, and economic development. And the reason that they're my top three issues is because it's no secret that traffic is the biggest issue in Napa County. And the three combined go hand in hand, right? We have a lot of people commuting out of town for jobs so that they can afford to stay in their houses that live in Napa County. And then we have a lot of people coming into town, living, driving up Valley to get to work because the jobs that they're working at cannot sustain their lifestyle in Napa County, right? So, they go hand in hand, and that's what I've been working on as a council member, and that's what I would like to continue doing as a supervisor, with a little bit of a different result than we've been getting. So, thank you so much for your time, and we will be getting into the details, I'm sure, with all of the questions.
You guys are speedy. Good evening. Thank you so much for joining us this evening to hear about what we all have to say about what it means to be a leader in Napa County. I am Belia Ramos, and I serve as your Fifth District Supervisor. Each and every single day as a county supervisor, I get to touch someone's life, whether it's connecting a mother of three who recently became homeless with a place to stay and a warm meal, whether it's welcoming people home to a new home in Napa County, 149 families that we welcomed home in 2019, whether it's advocating for parallel roads in American Canyon to relieve congestion on the highway, or disaster resiliency, or updating our conservation regulations for the first time in 18 years. Each and every day, I get to guard people's quality of life. The last three years have shown me that this is one of the most collaborative positions that exists within the county. We work with stakeholders each and every day. We work with our municipal partners. We work with our special districts. And we all have one purpose in mind, and that is to provide a quality of life that we hold so near and dear to our heart. Born and raised here in Napa County, I was born at the Queens. I lived in very affluent states. I lived in San Marina, the Ag Preserve, and I choose American Canyon as my home. I've seen all of the challenges before us as a renter, as a single mother of three. It is the discussions that we have with each and every person in the community that's going to bring us forward together with progress. I look forward to continuing to offer leadership and measurable progress into my next term on the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. And you're making Sally's job a lot easier. She doesn't have to...
It's still a percent.
So, now we'll start with the questions. We'll try and get through as many as we can. They, like Vida mentioned, they've come from online as well as from the audience. So, if we don't get to yours, we apologize. But hopefully, we will cover as many as possible. And we will start moving down the line. So, Amber, you will be the first one to answer this first question, and then we'll move around and end with Alfredo. So, the question is, does the county need to do more to protect the watershed and trees from hillside vineyard development?
Oh, only two minutes? Okay.
One and a half. I'm sorry.
All right. Yes, the county does need to do more to protect our water supply watersheds. We've had problems at two different reservoirs recently with them shutting down their water services because their filters are getting clogged with fine sediment. That sediment gets there because the watersheds above them are eroding. And that's something that is avoidable with good planning. So, this is a topic I've studied quite a bit. Something that I think is interesting to know is that the water supply watersheds are, they pretty much cover the eastern hills. There's Kimball up at the top of the headwaters of Napa River. There's Bell Canyon, Con, Rector, Milliken, and then down near Solana County, there's Lake Madigan. So, we're managing quite a few different water reservoirs. They each serve different municipalities. They're all very important to the water security for those places. And I don't want to... Yeah. So, just to, I guess, wrap it up. They're important for our quality of life to have clean water in those reservoirs. They each face unique threats upstream in the ones that are more developed. Those threats include erosion. They include nutrient delivery from fertilizers and also potentially pesticides and other things that are sprayed on crops. So, those are the things I would be concerned about and the things I would want to look at and work on planning-wise.
Thank you.
We're going to interrupt you for just one moment. We're having microphone difficulties, so could you two share that mic? And you two share this microphone.
No. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Maryam, you're next. Same question.
Yes, absolutely, is my answer, my quick answer. Water is an invaluable resource, and I understand water. I, in 2016, I was in a country where I was there for a month and a half, and our water was being cut off three days out of the week. We had zero water for three days out of the week. My first experience, for those of you who know me, you've probably already heard the story, but my first experience with not having water, I was 13 years old. I was in the shower, and there was shampoo in my hair. How embarrassing to say this in front of a roomful of people. But then the water cut off, and I had no water, and I didn't know why, and I started screaming. But apparently, in that country, that country is Jordan. In that country, that's the norm. Water is constantly being shut off there because they do not have enough water. One result of, I'm pretty sure everyone in this room knows of Measure C. It created a massive divide on this specific topic. And one thing that resulted from it is an ordinance that was put forth by the Board of Supervisors. One of the things that I would like to do as a supervisor is reopen that ordinance and bring more stakeholders to the table and get it done right. So, yes, I agree, watersheds need to be protected, and development does not need to infringe on our ag preserves.
Thank you. Belia.
Thank you so much. In 2019, the Board of Supervisors unanimously did approve a... updates to our conservation regulations first time in 18 years. And it did increase the tree canopy, and it did provide further protections and setbacks for municipal watersheds. Now, in conjunction with that, we also engaged with the city of Napa in a joint watershed study. We need to do more of that. One of the things, our watersheds are located within the county, but they're owned by our municipality. So, continuing to work with our cities to make sure that we are monitoring the health of our watersheds is going to be important to address the sediment, to address the TMDLs that Amber had referred to. Additionally, we need to do a better job at the county of making sure that people are acting upon their erosion control plans. The failed vineyards that have happened is because they have not followed through on their erosion control plans. So, we need to make sure that through our compliance process, that we are holding vineyards and vineyard management companies that are maintaining those vineyards accountable so that we can have confidence in the plans that we have approved and continuing to make sure that we are putting our watersheds and the people first. Without our water, it is our people that will suffer.
Thank you. Alfredo.
The benefit of going last, there's a lot of things that have been said that are good. And look, you know, water quality is important. Trees are important, and this is not new. This is the history of the county of Napa being good stewards. So, when you talk about the conservation regs that were adopted in 1991, this Board of Supervisors made the changes. Now, the changes weren't talking about the ceilings. They were talking about the floors and how much minimums we're going to have, what the minimums are going to be from street setbacks, what the minimum tree canopy retention is going to be. Now, I can tell you, it's 70% that we retain on tree canopy. But the fact is, when you look at the current projects in the queue today, they're protecting over 84% of the trees. Now, the joint watershed study that Supervisor Ramos alluded to, that was a partnership that myself and Mayor Teckel worked on together, recognizing that we need to work together to make sure we have the science and the data to make the necessary changes that we need to make. This Board of Supervisor also has implemented the MST, right? Looking at the aquifers and making sure whatever development is happening is happening sustainably, not at the expense of our residents and your property rights. So, this is not a new conversation. I think it's a continuation of our stewardship and making sure our residents, that you, have the confidence and the tools and the data that you're getting to make sure you know your water quality is protected, not just for today and the people in this room, but for the next generation.
Thank you. And now we will move on to question number two, and we will start with Maryam this time. The state has proposed selling portions of Skyline Park for housing. What is your vision for the future of Skyline Park land, and how could this vision be implemented?
That's a tough one.
Got a tough audience here.
Yeah. So, Skyline Park is beautiful open space. I've been hiking there, and there's... We were just talking about saving trees, but housing is also super important in this region and the lack thereof. Do I have a vision at this point? I absolutely do not have a vision for that, and I'm not ashamed to say. I completely understand that there's going to be a lot of issues that come before me that I don't know anything about yet or don't have enough information about yet. But that's when it's important to build relationships. And frankly, I have a track record on the city council of building these kinds of, exactly these kinds of relationships. And I totally get that that's not the answer you want to hear right now. You guys want concrete information about Skyline Park and my plan for housing there. But I don't have it, and I'm not afraid to admit that. Being an elected official, it's, a huge part of that is building relationships so that you can reach out to the stakeholders. And frankly, I don't believe that that's been done on the current board. And that's something that I do want to work more heavily on. And I'm not trying to sidestep this question, but I'm being very honest, and frankly, I don't have enough information.
Thank you. Belia.
Thank you. This isn't a difficult question at all. With recent legislation that was signed by the governor, the county of Napa has the option to purchase Skyline Park. In order to be able to purchase Skyline Park, we obviously need the money. That's why Measure K is incredibly important. The funding of Measure K and that revenue stream that will come from sales tax will allow us to bond against Measure K and purchase Skyline Park so that we preserve it indefinitely as open space. Right now, we are mere tenants of the state of California. As far as housing goes in state surplus land properties, it is a phenomenal idea to use surplus lands for housing. But we have prime sites in other locations in the county that already have infrastructure in place that don't pose the same challenge as a Skyline Park. For example, the Yountville Veterans Home would be a prime location to place housing for state surplus lands. Skyline Park does not have the infrastructure. It is in a rural area, and that is probably one of the areas that with legislation that we anticipate going forward in the wildland urban interface area, probably not the safest place to put affordable housing. We need to have services, resources, and transportation around housing. And frankly, that's just not it at Skyline Park. That needs to be preserved as permanent open space.
Thank you. Alfredo.
I'm not going to need the full time for this. We need to keep Skyline Park open space and for us to use. Once open space is gone, it's gone. There is no reversing back. I grew up in North Napa, and Skyline Park and Austin Park were parks I went to. I ran, I used my bike there. We need to continue to provide those opportunities for the kids. And that is once-in-a-generation opportunity for us. So, there's going to be mechanisms to pay for it, whether it's pulling back some of the funding that already goes to parks and open space or using some of the funding that's generated by Measure K. Very supportive. This is an opportunity to invest in our community and show our locals that this is something we're going to preserve for multiple generations.
Thank you. Amber.
All right. So, Skyline is a really important piece of open space for this community. It's one of the few large reserves that's close to our urban core. So, obviously, we need to pass Measure K because that's the easiest way to get that into the county's hands so that we can manage it and have it be a conservation landscape going forward. I think beyond that, my vision for Skyline Park is to have it be a connected component of the Bay Area Ridge Trail to connect it to outlying open spaces. And even beyond that, I think it would be wonderful if we could have more big parks that are available for people to hike in that are closer to our urban cores. And one other thing about my vision for Skyline Park is that in Skyline Park, there's Lake Murray, and there's Camille Creek that runs from it down to the Napa River. That is Salomonate Habitat, and it's the first right turn after coming up the Napa River for fishes that come through the Golden Gate. It's a prime opportunity to do some restoration. Right now, it's choked with invasive blackberries. And it would be a pretty easy fix, but we need to put a little bit of sweat equity in there. So, those are some of the things I think about when I think about our vision for Skyline Park. And no housing, and yes, keep it open.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to question number three, and we will start with Belia on this one. Will you support a citizen-led redistricting commission for the Board of Supervisors in 2021?
So, is it take it away from the, from the Elections Division? Is that the...
I'm not sure. And this one came over our email, so I don't think we have a person here to ask. I think, I think that might be city council redistricting?
It's with the decennial census that the county's going to have to redistrict. So, would you support a citizen-led redistricting commission versus like, you know, like, to his office?
Okay, so it is for the county.
Thank you. Yes. Will you support a citizen-led redistricting commission for the Board of Supervisors in 2021?
No, I think in, I think there's a great opportunity in light of the census data coming up to have more of a hybrid approach, where we have the community engaged in the process with the Elections Division. I say this from experience. When I was on the city council and redistricting was taking place for the community college and also for the supervisory seat that I sit in now, there was a great difference of opinion. And what I learned through that process, working through the Elections Division, that we know, we in the community do know our neighborhoods and our cities better. And so, I think that there's a great opportunity to collaborate with the Elections Department to be able to engage stakeholders and to have a more meaningful discussion as opposed to having one person simply opine on the process.
Thank you. Alfredo.
Yes, you know, I would keep an open mind to it. I would want to know a little bit more, other communities that have done this and what the pros and cons were. But let me talk about my interests as this is coming up, is I want to make sure we have fair, diverse district lines, where you have good, fair representation and opportunity to have representative government. Those are my interests going into this conversation. How we accomplish that, whether it's this route or the route we've done in the past, we have to keep an open mind. But I think it's trying to work backwards from what's the outcome we're looking for. And we know when it's been done wrong, we can point to communities that have been doing it wrong. You hear about those outcomes and the gerrymandering that happens. I'm not interested in that. I want to make sure, being the first Latino elected to the city council, I understand the power of representative government. And that would be my goal as this opportunity comes forward, is making sure all sectors of our community have the opportunity to participate and a fair opportunity to participate in government.
Thank you. Amber.
Okay. Well, as a geographer, this is a fun one for me. I'm already thinking about the maps and getting the data, and then guess what kind of data it is? It's census data, and we're about to do another census, which is why this question's coming up. So, A, number one, if you want fair elections, you need to turn in your census forms and make sure your neighbors and friends do too, right? That's important. And beyond that, I, you know, I fully believe in a transparent and open process and involving people at every level. So, you know, yes, I think we need the community involved in the districting process to make sure that it's fair. I think we also need people who are involved in the districting process who really understand census data and how it works. Because as somebody who actually uses census data, I know it's not a simple, a simple thing to do. You really need to have a lot of knowledge base there. So, those are my thoughts on that one.
So, one thing that we frequently do in American Canyon is have citizens committees, advisory committees. Currently, we're in the process of updating our general plan. And for each of the six elements, we have appointed advisory committees to get constituent input. Constituent input is always something that I'm going to support. That's my job as an elected. It's not my job to use this office for my own benefit. It is my job to use this office as a voice for the greater community, right? So, absolutely, I would be in favor of a partnership in terms of redistricting. Having grown up in District Five since before the incorporation of American Canyon, I firmly believe that the residents who live in the communities definitely understand them much better than people who are overseeing the communities and have never grew up in them or haven't lived in them and are just trying to make decisions based on census data. Census data is absolutely great, and yes, I echo the sentiment of everybody, please get in your senses. Questionnaires, if not, we're going to lose like $19,000 per person who does not complete a census, is not counted in the census as a county. Going way off topic, the answer to the question is, yes, I would support a redistricting committee, which includes residents, along with John Tudor's office.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to question number four. And now we will start with Alfredo. Napa County lost over 200 small family farms and vineyards between 2013 and 2019. What will the Napa community look like when another 200 are gone?
That's not a very promising vision for the future. Look, our small farmers have a huge role to play in Napa County. We need to make sure that Napa County doesn't become one-dimensional. Now, at the same time, we need to protect, we need to understand that there's certain land uses that come along with that. And we need to make sure that we're not over-commercializing areas that were never intended to be commercialized. So, we do have a discussion at the Board of Supervisors with a group that's come together to advocate for small farmers and the ability to have an ability to sell your wine on site. So, that is a discussion we're having at the Board of Supervisors. When we do that, though, we need to make sure we do it right. There are some really, there's some concerns I have about the unintended consequences of over-commercializing areas that shouldn't be commercialized, that don't have the infrastructure. So, I support the vision of giving small farmers an opportunity to be part of our vineyard and wine industry, but we need to do it right. And to me, we have such an ag treasure here in our community that when we consider these discussions, which I do believe they're part of our future, we need to be thoughtful and deliberate because when we get it wrong, the price is too significant for us.
Thank you. Amber.
This is, this is a tough problem because having looked at the patterns in the changes in ownership over time of businesses, wine-related businesses, vineyards and wineries in the county, there's been, you know, the long-term trend over the last 35 years has been toward consolidation for big companies. And those companies change depending on where the money is at a global scale right now. So, this is one where it's, it's, this is a really difficult problem to fix locally because the forces at play are global. That's the level of money and resources that we're dealing with. So, you know, the way the question was posed was kind of a downer, right? And, but that's the thing, this one's so hard to fix. It really is. So, what California has in place already is the Williamson Act to protect older, smaller family farms, and it has Prop 13 to protect, as a tax protection for properties that have been held. You know, the longer you hold it, the better your tax savings. If we're going to look at something locally, this is going to have to be a really, kind of a soul-searching project for this place. I don't think I can answer this one in my 20 seconds remaining. But this is definitely a topic for stakeholder processing and bringing in members from all over the community to think about how to make this, make this work better here.
Thank you. Maryam.
So, one thing I am in favor of is supporting local business and our small family vineyards, our local business. So, we need to figure out a way to help support our local businesses so that we don't have another 200 small winery shut down. The problem with that is, when in American Canyon Incorporated, we had about 5,000 residents, and now we're at over 20,000, and the infrastructure is exactly the same. So, if we're talking about allowing more traffic to come through the neighborhoods because we're supporting these local vineyards, I don't have a problem with that, but we also need to consider our residents, right? If I lived next door to a small family vineyard, I wouldn't want to suddenly open that up to tastings and sales and have truck traffic coming up my street. We have another issue in American Canyon, and I know I'm speaking city, but that's my past four years of experience. Green Island Road, that's our industrial park. When it was built, the kind of pavement that was used was not the kind of pavement that holds tons, like thousand-pound trucks down those roads. So, there's potholes galore, and that's something that we need to consider. That's just an example of one of the things that we need to consider when we're thinking about our residents in saving the family farms, saving the family vineyards, right? At some point, we have to figure out the balance there. And I'm not about, I'm not an impediment to growth. I'm all about supporting the businesses, but I also think that we need to consider our residents and figure out that balance.
When, thinking about this question, really, this question isn't about wineries shutting down. It's about vineyards and growers. And as the daughter of farmworkers, my parents have a small vineyard. They farm nine acres. And so, while they do not produce wine and they have no intention of doing that, there are those that have the dream of producing wine.
are those that have the dream of, of producing wine. The landscape of the industry has changed so much. And the survivability going forward for our agricultural heritage and what we know as our economic engine, which pays for the quality of life and the services that we're able to deliver here in the county of Napa, is gonna require us to think about this differently. As we think about that, infrastructure is an important consideration. But another two things that must be considered are making sure that we protect the Napa name, that we make sure that we are adhering to the limitations set forth in the Winery Definition Ordinance and that we do not run amok of those. If you saw the Napa Register article in the last couple of days, it is the Napa name that has carried us forward to be, to be this economic agricultural engine. And looking forward and working with our small family farmers is going to increase our sustainability, our diversity and our economic vitality into the future.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to question number five, and we will start with Amber on this one. The question is protesting and harassment at the Napa Planned Parenthood Health Center has increased. Would you support an ordinance change that would create a buffer zone around the center and enforce the existing laws that protect the patients and staff?
Okay, that's a pretty heavy question. So, let's see. Yeah, as a, as a former client at that center, that's a really uncomfortable thing to walk through. That is a really uncomfortable thing to walk through, especially since a lot of the services that they're providing at Planned Parenthood aren't abortions. They're providing preventative, you know, preventative reproductive resources, they're providing health checks, they're providing STD prevention, and they're doing a lot for the young people in this community. That's a really critical resource, especially for underprivileged parts of our community. So, so, yeah, I mean, people do have a right to protest, but they don't have a right to harass. And I think there's a line there that we would need to look at. I, you know, if, if there's a, yeah, if we could figure out a way that doesn't infringe on free speech rights that would actually protect the people who are going there as clients for services, I would be fully in support of that. And I might not know enough about it to make a specific recommendation right now, but I think hopefully from that answer, you have an idea where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Miriam?
I honestly don't have much more to add to that, right? Because I'm assuming that this question is asked within compliance of the federal laws in the state, in the country's constitution. I, I would support a buffer zone. Planned Parenthood, like supervisor, supervisor Manfree. Like Ms. Manfree just said, it provides for a lot of services. And there are people who go there because they simply don't have health insurance and they need to be seen by a doctor. And they go and they get treated. Pregnant moms, expecting moms, they go to Planned Parenthood to make sure that their baby is okay. There's no reason to harass anybody regardless of your beliefs. And so, yeah, I would definitely support an increased buffer zone for Planned Parenthood.
Thank you. Beilia?
As a former council member and now a county supervisor, one thing I'm very cognizant of is where my jurisdiction stops and the other side picks up. And as of right now, Planned Parenthood operates within the city of Napa on Jefferson Street. So it is incredibly important to work with city partners to allow them to address this issue first. It would be presumptuous of me in a county supervisor position to say that zoning changes should be amended within the city of Napa. I leave that to the mayor and the council members. But I would be happy to work with them and discuss any concerns that have been raised either here or through constituents.
Thank you, Alfredo.
Answer's yes. You know, I served on the Board for Ola Health that serves 114 children and 33,000 patients in Napa County. So it is critical that members of our community have access to healthcare in a safe manner. I think the opportunity here too is how do we start looking at some of these organizations that are providing similar services and the ability to co-locate? So as you see Ola Health expand and get new buildings and other providers like Aldea expanding their footprint, I think this is an opportunity to bring organizations together in a centralized location to provide better and safe services. I think that's one of the opportunities we have in our community to do a better job. So that way, folks don't have to question whether they can go to a service and feel safe. That is not acceptable for Napa County.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to question number six. And we will start with Miriam this time. Since each district covers a wide range of constituency, how do or would you balance the divergent needs of your district?
That is an excellent question, and I believe it's especially excellent for District Five. District Five is so unique and so different, right? We have the entire city of American Canyon, but then we have Alta Heights and Coombsville and more affluent neighborhoods. They're very different. I've been walking precincts on a daily basis and I'm learning the issues are very different as well. I believe it's very important as a supervisor with a district that broad to be in constant contact with your residents in order to be able to advocate for them and represent them well. Walking precincts is one way. I've been walking precincts every two years, whether I'm up for reelection or not, because it keeps you engaged and it keeps you informed, number one. Hosting town halls, going to events, having office hours, any way you can engage with your residents to make sure. It's also a self-check, right? Because there's a lot of very engaged members or community members in District Five. And when I give them the opportunity to see me, they let me know, you're doing a great job, but you messed up here. And they hold us accountable. And I think that's what the office is all about, right? Representing your constituency and being held accountable by them. So in order to be able to do that, you need to be accessible, you need to be in touch, you need to host town halls, you need to make sure that you give your constituents an opportunity to address their concerns with you.
Thank you.
As District Five Supervisor over the last three years, one thing that has become incredibly clear is that when you represent the unincorporated county, there are very different needs in the unincorporated county versus those city and urbanized areas. This district is 62% comprised of American Canyon, 26% of the city of Napa and 12% of Coombsville. But what makes each of these areas different is that Coombsville does not have any other representation except for myself. The city of American Canyon has its five council members. The city of Napa has its five council members. Taking that into consideration is one thing. The next thing is to have town halls. I have actually had the town halls. I have had six town halls during my first term, and I still have almost a whole entire year to go. Making sure you, you have communication on a regular basis, which we do through a monthly newsletter to apprise people of what is specifically going on in the fifth district and in the county itself. And to have stakeholder meetings and to show up at stakeholder meetings when invited. Making sure you're being responsive to your emails, making sure you're answering people's questions no matter how tough. I received a question this morning on XS ERAF. It was a hard one, but I answered it at 5:12 this morning.
Thank you. Alfredo?
At 5:12 this morning, I was changing my daughter's diaper. So I'm not sure who had a harder job, Supervisor Ramos. So I, I think the way you represent your district is being involved. And I do an annual town hall meeting in my district when it's not election season to be engaged, to hear from the community. And we cover many issues, but it's also an opportunity to listen and provide the people I work for an opportunity to ask me questions. So we've been doing that. It's no secret to anyone in this room that I'm a big fan of coffee. So we do neighborhood coffees where we make ourselves available to answer those questions, to talk about the issues that are pressing. And District Four is very diverse. We go all the way to Lake Bariessa, and we've been very proud to work on taking over the concessions around the lake and restore the vibrancy for Lake Bariessa. In the Silverado area, working with HOAs, we passed the first fire rise council for urban neighborhood. That is remarkable. But it takes getting to know your constituents, what the needs are. And then the Sota Canyon, it's, it's investing in roads and understanding the unique challenges, you know, the residents of Sota Canyon face. So it's, it's really taking the time to invest in those relationships, understand the issues and provide the solutions.
Thank you. Amber?
All right, so I'm a hillperson. We don't have hillbillies in Napa because this is an upscale location. I'm a hillperson. And, and having lived out in the remote area, I have a very firsthand, up-close view of what the issues have been and are emerging to be out, out there. So, so I would say that, you know, the issues, as I understand them to be, talking to my friends and neighbors, are remote wineries permitting and vineyard conversion. I'm opposed to remote winery locations for a variety of reasons, partly for disaster planning and fire safety, also for impacts on roads and neighbors, and also for impacts on water and, and habitat. There are water resources concerns that you have in the remote areas that you don't have in town because you're running on wells. So that's a little bit different. I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of water resources generally, and I'm prepared to address both. Disaster planning is something that people in the city are increasingly concerned about because it's not just us rural residents who are well-prepared to whip out our camp stoves when we need to because we're used to power outages. But people in the cities are finding they need to do that too. And that's something that I have, again, a very good firsthand working knowledge of, especially living with my mother and grandmother and caring for them in that location. And the other thing I have to say is that for residents of the city of Napa, I am a proponent of smart growth principles, of centralizing growth, of making this place more bike and pedestrian friendly to improve our traffic problems and focusing on mass transit instead of increasing our infrastructure for single occupancy vehicles. Thank you. And that's my time.
Okay, great. Thank you. And now on to question number seven. Some folks are concerned that the needs of hospitality and wine industries take precedence over the needs of locals. How would you respond to that? And this question, we will start with Beilia.
One of the things that is, is interesting and is the way in which what the county does is reported. Everything that the, that is top news, everything that becomes divisive, everything that is the talk of the town ends up being about land use, when in fact, the county's responsibility and largest charge is in Health and Human Services, Corrections and Road Maintenance. So I would say one, no. It is not the priority of the county. In fact, our most vulnerable is the priority of the county. That is our constitutional charge. Now, I can't help what Barry Eberlin writes about in the Register as his top news story, but I can tell you that planning process has a due process element to it. And that once an application does go through, we have the obligation to give it a hearing, a proper hearing. And as long as the application does meet the requirements set forth, then it is approved. Now, what's incumbent is on us, the Board of Supervisors. We're at a crossroads. It's time for us to start truly reevaluating whether through a remote winery ordinance, whether it's through visitation limitations, for us to define what we want the future to look like so that we are putting people first at all times. And that's the impression that we give.
Thank you. Alfredo?
Development cannot come at the expense of our quality life. And this is not about development over residents. And if that is a natural tension, this government has to do a better job of making sure our residents know what we're doing to protect and enhance our quality of life. As a supervisor, I'm not going anywhere. I'm raising my kids here. I'm not interested in creating a future that my kids aren't gonna want to be part of. So I take that responsibility very seriously. Now, having said that, we look at every development application very specifically to that location. How appropriate is that development for that area? And the fact is, there have been proposals, development applications that have been withdrawn at the county because they are not appropriate. So what you see and what gets covered in the newspaper is what is approved. But there are significant development requests that are not appropriate for Napa County because it is an over-commercialization of that area and it gets denied. And that is good government. Now, we need to make sure that the way we grow through our general plan is appropriate for this time. And I think 30-year general plan cycles are not appropriate anymore. We have to have shorter plans to make sure our residents know how our community is gonna grow in a responsible way. But this is not about a win-loss scenario. This is not about chasing revenue to have a balanced budget. If our residents are not feeling appreciated and supported by the community we're building, we're building the wrong community. And we need to make sure that those that are here want to be part of this community, and it needs to be done with development that's smart and responsible and sustainable.
Thank you. Amber?
Okay, so, so my campaign slogan is putting locals first. And the reason I chose that, it came to me so naturally because that's the thing that I perceive not happening here. And the more I move around the community and talk to people at their doors, it doesn't matter if it's a rural resident in Sota Canyon or it's somebody who, you know, is a bookkeeper who lives in town, they all say that it feels out of balance to them. And I'm concerned that we've been treating winery permits as a right for a long time, but they're not a right, they're discretionary. And if it's bad for the community, we don't have to grant them. We need to be looking at cumulative impacts. We're passing, I'm not, but the current board is passing vast preponderance of proposals that come before it without looking at cumulative impacts. They're just looking at that project internally and not looking at how it affects the bigger picture of traffic and housing and the mix of jobs that we have here. Those are really important things, and we need to assess them as a big-picture issue. Not every project by itself as if it's not connected to everything else in the community because it is. So the county's been having pushback from residents about a number of issues, and they've actually been getting stuck in legal issues over several projects because they would permit something and then, once it's taken to court, the judge would send it back saying, I don't think you considered everything about this issue. I'm happy to talk more about that after the break. I'm sure I'm close to my time. But I do think we need to look at cumulative impacts and we need to enforce the existing policies. If we just started there, we'd be doing much better than we are.
Thank you. Miriam?
So I don't believe that this question is based on the county providing basic services versus approving wineries. I do not believe that the county is giving the impression that they are putting locals over hospitality versus the other way around. When we're talking about this question, no one is saying, don't approve winery permits. No one's saying that. But if you're gonna do that, be accountable, take responsibility, figure out how you're gonna mitigate the traffic that's gonna come with the added winery, figure out how you're go, where you're going to house the workers who are coming from out of town to work at these jobs. That's where I'm at with this. I'm tying it right back to housing and traffic, right? Because we approve projects, but that doesn't mean that we, we have to be irresponsible about approving projects. In American Canyon, let me give you an example. We have the new IKEA warehouse. When that developer came to the City Council, I asked, the very first question I asked is, how are you going to mitigate the traffic that you're going to bring in with this? The developer responded by saying, well, it's not, it's not, we aren't gonna have customers come shop here like IKEA in Emeryville, it's a distribution center. I said, well, that's great. That's a huge building. How many people are gonna work there? And where are those trucks gonna go? Are you gonna magically build a new freeway? And so we came up with staggered shifts for that specific project, but being more responsive to your residents, right? Additionally, did you already say stop? I see you stopped. Okay, sorry. Additionally, we can, we can talk about the hospitality industry. How many locals want to stay in Napa with how crowded it is when you finally get a day off? Do you want to be sitting in that downtown traffic? Now my time's up and I can continue because I am passionate about this issue, but.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll go on to question number eight. And we will start with Alfredo. Clover Flat Landfill in 2019 caused illegal discharge to the creek, causing acidification with an additional hazardous waste explosion and exposure to radiation to five employees. Would you support closure as soon as possible of Clover Flat Landfill?
I don't think we need to close Clover Flat. Having served on the authority board that manages Clover Flat, there was restrictions placed on Clover Flat where it was not open to the public while they were addressing those situations. Now, we took legal action against Clover Flat as well. We brought in all the resources from CAL FIRE to folks and the hazmat team to make sure that the operation was not gonna continue to impact residents. It was a very unfortunate situation that is not acceptable, not tolerated. And we took appropriate action through the agencies that we could had authority over. So I don't think it's a question of, let's shut them down. We need to make sure that if they're gonna continue to do business in Napa and provide a service in Napa County, that they are playing by the rules and being a good steward to our community. The question of if you shut them down... The question of if you shut them down, where are we going to provide that service? It means more trucks on the road, potentially go into a different location, which may not be the best environmental move to make. So, what I would say, the responsibility we have is for anyone that wants to do business in Napa like Clover Flat, they have a responsibility to be accountable, and it is our job as County Napa through the agency to make sure they're held accountable. And to this day, they have been following the agreement that they were stipulated to.
All right. So, Clover Flat. Okay. So, clearly what happened is not good. This is something that, I guess, I question this like at a societal level as to why we have landfills that are, you know, this dangerous. You know, that's a whole nother level of the question, but the way that we manage resources is, clearly has some problems systemically, right? So, as far as Clover Flat, I think that this is something I'd have to look at more and know more details about to make a definitive statement about whether closing it makes sense or just managing it better with better measuring, monitoring, and enforcement is the answer. But generally, I think that we need to look at waste streams in the county to make sure that we're doing all we can to reuse, reduce, recycle, all those things. Yeah.
Thank you. Maryam?
I believe that ensuring compliance is key. It's very important. Of course, an explosion and exposure to radiation for employees is not good. Absolutely, that's not good. And there's got to, there has to have been something wrong going on there. Is this microphone working? There has to have been something going on there, right? But I don't believe that just closing landfills is the answer. I do believe that it speaks to a bigger problem that we have in terms of recycling, reusing. One of the, one of the things that we've done in the state of California is start charging $0.10 for plastic bags. Where is that $0.10 going? What are we doing with that money? Is that money going back to the communities? Is it being invested? Or is it just going into the pockets of business owners, right? And that's something that, one of the examples of something that we need to look into is how we treat our waste generally. And then, I would not be opposed to closing Clover Flat if they're not in compliance and if they're not treating their employees safely, if they're not, if they're exposing them to unsafe conditions. I would not be opposed to closing it and figuring out another way and another place to do this kind of stuff.
Thank you. This is an incredibly timely question. Clover Flat certainly has had its issues of compliance, the seepage that has occurred into the Dutch Creek, and that's absolutely not acceptable. It is incumbent upon the authority and the LEA to be able to ensure compliance, and that is something that we are committed to, that we actually received communication of, I believe, this morning. I think that was a 5:00 AM read as well, that that is our mission at this point. With the management changes that have happened at Clover Flat over the last two years, I think that we have a greater sense of willingness on the part of the management team to be able to set forth that compliance. I think that we need to continue to work with DWR, with State Water Resource Board, to ensure that we are properly monitoring the situation and that we are changing accordingly for any new occurrences that may happen so that they don't come to us as a surprise, as some have been. But continuous monitoring and compliance, I think, is the first avenue for addressing Clover Flat.
Thank you. And now, we'll move on to the next question. And the, this question is, "What is your position regarding Measure K?" Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Amber, you begin.
I enthusiastically endorse Measure K. I don't think I need to elaborate on that. I don't. I will just a little bit because I'm running out of time on other questions. But I lived in Sonoma County for a long time. They authorized their open space district about 30 years ago. It's been a boon for that community. It gets people outside. It's preserved like 100,000 acres or something of their enormous landscape, which Sonoma County is quite a bit bigger than Napa, but they've done a beautiful job with conservation, restoration, programming to get people out into those wild landscapes and get them connected to nature, which is increasingly important as people live in urban centers more and more and are less living in rural areas and becoming connected to the landscape just by where they live. So, yeah, I support it because we need more open space, and we can create those opportunities for connections to nature.
I've also endorsed Measure K. One of, in addition to what Amber just said, one of the really important things about Measure K is the funding that it's going to provide for our local parks that are already existing and maintaining them. Ever since I've been elected to the city council, I've been fighting for our West Side parks. And the reason why I say West Side parks is if you're not familiar with the City of American Canyon, the West Side is a little bit older than the East Side. So, I grew up on the West Side, and I played in the parks my entire life. We always played. We didn't have iPads and cellphones back then to just sit there and watch movies. If we watched a movie after two hours, we were antsy because we wanted to go run across the street and rollerblade and play football in the street with our neighbor kids, right? And so, parks are so important to this valley, so important to this region for your mental and physical well-being. And the funding that's going to come to District 5, to the county, to these parks that are already in existence is one of the biggest reasons why I'm supporting this measure.
Thank you. Billia?
I support Measure K, and I am an official endorser of Measure K. The reason is Measure K is going to provide the Open Space District its own secured revenue stream. And the reason for that's important is right now, the Open Space District has been operating on the goodwill of the county. Through our special revenue project fund, we give about $1 million to the Open Space District because when it was created, and it was an incredible accomplishment to create an open space and parks district because that is not a county function, it did not have a secured revenue stream. So, we have been at the county, the county has been supportive of open space, and it's important for us to make sure that we secure the revenue stream so that this open space and the projects, and primarily the acquisition that happens through the Open Space District continues to happen, and hopefully, first off, with Skyline Park.
Alfredo?
Yes. And I think the campaign has a model, put your iPad down, go to the park. I think that could really resonate. So, very supportive of it. And look, last time, this measure did not pass. The reason there is neighborhood parks included this time was because Mayor Tackle and I sat down with the Land Trust, Parks and Open Space, and we started talking about two years ago of how could we create a measure that would get the most support for our communities? And it wasn't just open space. It was making sure we're investing in neighborhood parks. And we can all recall, if you are born and raised in Napa, your neighborhood park, and that has an affinity to you. And that's part of creating better communities that are connected, that you can go out and enjoy and have a healthy lifestyle. So, we do support it. But it's also acknowledging how we got here, and I do want to commend Mayor Tackle for being an instrumental player in getting the initiative in a way that I think is going to better the entire community. Whether you're a county or a city resident, you deserve the opportunity to be outside and enjoy your life.
Thank you. This will probably be the last question, given our time constraints. And we will start this time with Maryam. And the question is, "When will the county require new hotels to provide employee housing? Would a change in footprint or number of rooms trigger employee housing requirement?"
So, I'm not currently on the county board. So, my answer to this question is, I've been talking about it, right? I've been talking about the need for housing here and the fact that we have so many people commuting into the valley, clogging up our roadways, affecting our climate because of the fact that they're working at the hotels and the wineries and not getting paid enough to be able to live in the valley. So, when will be, when will we be requiring that? Hopefully, I'm elected, and that's something that I would love to start working on. But I'm not currently on the board, so I can't talk about why it hasn't happened yet.
Turning back to our jurisdictional boundaries, one of the things that makes Napa County so beautiful is that we have our ag preserve and our ag watershed. And the commercial zones in which commercial activities such as hotels can take place in is actually quite limited. There are very few sites that exist within the county. So, in order for the county to be able to impose a worker housing program, it would need to first be a development within the jurisdiction of the county. I certainly do encourage and applaud the cities when they are looking at alternative methods of providing housing instead of just the in lieu of fees that we are permitted to, to charge. I think that this is the beauty of development agreements, where if we are presented with an opportunity of having a hotel project within the county jurisdiction, that we could ask the, we could work and negotiate with the developer to be able to provide that onsite. But those opportunities are actually few and far between, given our jurisdictional limitations and given the requirements of Measure J, Measure P in preserving our ag preserve and our ag watershed.
So, I support the concept of requiring onsite housing where it makes sense. There might be locations where it doesn't. You want to make sure that your workforce can live in connected communities where the amenities and the infrastructure is. Now, having said that, I think one of the things that we can point to that our lodging partners are doing, when we started campaigning about increasing the TOT to 1%, we worked in partnership with our tourism community to increase that tax that's generating over $5 million. So, I don't think we need to convince our lodging partners that housing is an issue. They've been stepping up and making it a priority. In addition to that, I think what we need to do is free up county land and make it available for housing and create those opportunities. The fact is, we have 40% of our workforce commutes in. 40%. Greenhouse gas emissions, social equity issue, you're not building a good community when 40% of your folks don't live here. It's a responsibility that we have, but we need to engage our partners to do it right in a responsible way where you're integrating people into our communities. One example we have that works is our farmworker centers. But our farmworker centers are out in the county. They're not part of the community. I want to make sure that those that are working here and living here are integral part of the social DNA that we have in this community that makes special communities.
So, for, for asking hotels and, and service industry, you know, large service industry businesses coming in to provide worker housing and really underwrite the cumulative impacts that they are causing when they come into the community, I think to do that successfully, we need to make it a standard. One of the things that you can do when you're negotiating things is you can, as a, as a community, as a city, as a county, you can set some ground rules, and you can say, "This is how it works here. And if you want to be part of this community, you know, this is the bar." They did that beautifully in the City of Davis. That's how they got all their bike and pedestrian connectivity in place. They said to every single developer that wanted to build a housing project, "You're going to comply with our general plan, which asks you to be part of the green belt, which asks you to provide bus stops in good, connected locations," right? So, it was the baseline. And I think that's something we can do here. I believe, in my understanding, that the county has successfully negotiated on three different occasions for resort developments to provide actual built worker housing, right? And so, if we can do that three times, I think two of the places actually got built. If we can do that three times, I think we can do it going forward. And I think part of this is being willing to say no when we see a bad project and not being so subject to the pressure of thinking, "Maybe another developer will never show up." You know, I don't think that's a problem we necessarily have here, and sometimes setting standards can get you to a better place, right? In life generally, but maybe also with development. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all. And thank you all for all these good questions, and many of them came over email as well. People may or may not be here, but hopefully, they'll watch the video and hear all the answers. Now, we will go with closing statements. There will be one minute, and we will start with Billia and work our way down the opposite direction.
One minute?
One minute.
Thank you so much for joining us today and listening to each of our versions of what leadership looks like. Leadership at the county level, to me, looks like collaboration, stability, and proven measurable progress. It requires listening to residents, stakeholders, colleagues, and staff. Measurable progress looks like setting a goal of building Devlin Road, the county's portion, and for me to be able to say to you tonight, you'll be driving on it in 60 days, of constructing 149 units of affordable housing in 2019. Stability and measurable progress is what we need going forward for the county. That is what I'm, what I offer. That is what I have delivered in my first term, and that is why I'm endorsed by Congressman Thompson, Assembly Member Aguirre Curry, Supervisors Pedrosa, Gregory, Wagon Connect, Mayor's Jill Tackle, and Leon Garcia, a number of council members, Superintendent of Schools Barbara Nemko. I look forward to continuing to serve as your 5th District Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. Maryam?
Oh, we're going backwards.
Yep, this way, yeah, a little different now.
Okay, awesome. So, whenever I go first, I always get too excited and don't say everything I want to say. So, I'm going to take 10 seconds to say, per the last question. Amazon is now selling do-it-yourself tiny homes for $8,000. Innovative solutions can be anything. I just had to throw that out there. So, I don't, I have a full-time job, which I absolutely love. I have a fiance. I have an amazing family. These are the things that I want to be spending my time doing, right? When I ran in 2016, I ran because I felt like there was a need. I felt like the council was not addressing the most important issue in the county, which is traffic. Nobody was addressing that, and I was frustrated. So, I ran because I've never been the kind of person to sit back and wait for someone else to do something. Now, I'm running again because I feel like there's a need. Collaboration and talking to stakeholders, yes. That is very important, and I have a track record of doing that. If you've watched council meetings, if you've talked to my colleagues, they will tell you I have a tracker, track record of doing that, and that's why I've received endorsements as well. Sorry. And I'll talk to you about those later.
There will be some time after this.
All right. Backwards is messing us all up.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. So, I'm happy to be here today. I'm happy to see all of you here because it means we have engaged citizens in this community. I have a background in science, and I would love to be able to use that training to assess the problems that we need to solve here in this community with confidence and with ability and also with a lot of your input because, in addition to enjoying spreadsheets, I also enjoy talking to people. So, so, you know, please, you know, consider carefully your decision here. I'm interested in, I'm interested in putting people first and listening to people, and I'm a grassroots candidate that wants to do measuring, monitoring, enforcement for our local issues, and wants to look at things comprehensively as a big-picture kind of system. Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank you all for being here as well, and also to Judge Langhorn, who snuck in at the end. Thank you for being here. And I bring that up because you need to build relationships with individuals. When you talk about the Joint Watershed Study that I mentioned earlier, when you talk about the Climate Change Committee Group that we created and I'm chairing, when you talk about the significant investments we've made on housing and traffic, you don't do that alone. You need, you do that by building relationships and working with people. And that's what I've built over time, and we're leading on the issues that matter most to our community. So, putting you first is not new. It's not a campaign slogan. It's our commitment manifested over time by meaningful actions. So, I ask for the consideration to continue serving you one more term, to continue making sure Napa County is the envy of every other county in the state of California. So, I appreciate the consideration.
Well, and we thank all you candidates because we know you've been pulled into a lot of different kinds of forums, and you have your day jobs, and this gives both the people here and people who emailed and whoever will watch our video to really get to know the candidates better, and that's what we're all about.